We called a order the, uh, school board meeting for Penn Trafford School District, uh, January 9th, 2017. We can start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before he starts to roll call, I just want to remind everyone, the audience, that tonight's meeting is always being videotaped. The guys are actually in another room, or it's not the guys, guys and girls from the video department are actually videotaping us, and tonight's our very first meeting that's being streamed live on Facebook. So, we are expanding. So thank you for being here.
All right, Mrs. Zissin.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard. Is absent this evening. Mr. Materazzo.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Petrucci.
Here.
Mr. Spurley.
Here.
Okay, you have a quorum, Mr. President. Thank you. Uh, right now, we need to take a moment to swear in and have Bruce Knoll take the oath of office. Yes, sir, Mr. Knoll. You can stand, please. Okay, you want to raise your right hand and repeat out the name? I, Bruce Knoll, solemnly swear.
I, Bruce Knoll, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
I know I do. The Constitution is Commonwealth.
The Constitution is Commonwealth.
And I will discharge my duties of my office with fidelity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Nice to have you back, Mr. Knoll.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 5th meeting, please?
Motion.
A motion by, uh, Mr. Kachasik, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Materazzo, that the minutes of the organization regularly meeting on Monday, December 5th, uh, be approved as presented. A call to question.
Question.
Question being called for. Uh, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried. Uh, Dr. Harris handed over to you for information.
Thank you. Um, a couple of items to share. Um, first of all, PTARC, we had our PTARC meeting tonight, and the new brochure is being, I want to pass around and share with all the, um, board members. Lot of good activities. Nick, any comments? He was at the PTARC meeting.
Yeah, the, um, uh, Linda Byers, I can't praise her enough. Maybe Dr. Harris would agree with me on this, that, uh, this is, this is very attractive. The numbers are way up. Um, the fund balance was, uh, what was that, man? Fifty thousand dollars, uh?
We had nice, high fund balance. I don't remember the exact total.
Yeah, it's in the, in the black. She's, um, writing grants. Trafford got a playground grant from the fair, and I would earn twenty-two thousand dollars. She's, um, Pen, with, um, Pen Township, she's working hard with them people. Excuse me, but she's doing, I mean, excellent. The activity fund, and she's, she's getting closer and closer to that 2020 year, where I think we're, the membership fee should be really close to nothing. And she is really, she pushes. She's just a very hard worker. Cap, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, the, the summer program, there's been a lot of success with that, with, with the programs throughout the community, and we've seen numbers go up since I've been there every year, and the quality of students, because all of our students at the high school work at all these community areas during the summer. It's impressive with the program they have and how to prepare them to, uh, take a leadership role during the summertime. It's impressive.
She always, yeah, she always also give us new, uh, job description for the, uh, director, for the, uh, summer.
She has the new goals, um, job directors' responsibilities. She's constantly changing, trying to find new programs. If there's a new program or there's a new trend, she's having a class for it. So we always appreciate her doing everything she does for our PTARC programs. Um, in addition, I want to let you know that we are working with Apex Energy. Um, we are working with them to, for our bus routes, and the time working with the different bus transportation and their trucks, we want to try to make sure that they're not on the roads at the same time. So we are working with the company, and they're very, um, supportive with us and great to work with. And finally, our purse bash is coming up this weekend, Saturday night. I just sold a, um, ticket to Mrs. Klein, so she'll be there. Hopefully, she'll win a purse. And I know Scott Koschko and Tony just bought one, she promised me last week, so a lot of tickets. It's a great night. It all supports the Penn Trafford Community Education Foundation and all of our teacher grants. So every year, we give about, about twenty-five thousand dollars in teacher grants, and this foundation, um, this night usually brings in about ten thousand towards that. Everything else comes from money we get from the EITC, local grants that we apply for, um, business tax credits. So we're very thankful to our foundation for all they do for us. Um, next, today, um, and this is kind of why you saw us taking the picture before the school, before you got here, um, it's actually National School Board Recognition Month, and we always honor our school board members. I just lost my thing I was going to read. Um, Pennsylvania Public Schools educate nearly two million students, and three thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight students are represented from Penn Trafford School District. Each one of those students has an individual story and a different path they were taken into adulthood. The roads to success are varied as the students, but they are not traveling this path alone. Parents, teachers, administrators, school bus drivers, PCAs, secretaries, custodians, and cafeteria aides all play a vital role in the success of students. In January, we also pause to salute another group of nine people who spend dozens of hours each month volunteering, leading our schools, and making the difficult decisions. They are our school directors. The success of our students are being highlighted in a state camp, campaign called PA Public Schools Success Starts Here. School directors play a special part in this campaign, and in fact, they are, they set the foundation for a strong education system in our local area. These elected officials spend countless hours reviewing budgets, approving curriculum and textbook choices, reviewing hiring decisions, adopting policies, evaluating the academic and operational results of the districts. They are our neighbors, friends, community, community leaders, and engaged student, senior citizens, doing a necessary job for the benefit of our children. As we continue to celebrate the success stories in our schools, let's not forget our elected school directors who play a significant role in creating the environment where those successes can happen. So today, we have our, our nine, and we're very proud of everything you do, and you're always very supportive. I hope you enjoy your month. And each one from PTBAs, and I'll have a certificate that you receive, as well as a nice, um, promotional shirt. So thank you for all that you do. And I know your favorite time of the month is when we honor our students, because this is actually the highlight of every single thing we do. It actually is for our students. And as of now, we're going to take some time to honor our students, starting with our Elementary Student of the Month, and Mrs. Coroner from Sunrise.
Thanks, Dr. Harris. I'm going to start with, uh, my building update. So Sunrise has, um, currently many initiatives underway and some fabulous learning experiences for our students. Kindergarten students are developing independent learning skills in weekly stations and centers. Students in grade one, two, and four have weekly STEAM lessons where they are experimenting and improving their own problem-solving skills, often in teams. Grade three just completed a career-centered book that was published and went home just before the holidays. And grades three, four, and five all participated in one hour of code in late December, where they were coding using an online site. Sunrise is currently beginning the planning for a building-wide career fair that we are going to hold in May. We are looking forward to a second semester filled with more beneficial learning opportunities. So I would like to now introduce my Student of the Month for January. Would Gabriella Spina come on up here? Gabriella goes by Ella, and Sunrise Elementary would like to congratulate the Elementary Student of the Month for January, Miss Gabriella Spina. Ella is the eleven-year-old fifth-grade daughter of Mike and Beth Spina. She has an older brother, Michael, who is in seventh grade at Trafford Middle, and a younger brother, Billy, who is in third grade at Sunrise. When speaking with Ella, she told me she likes both math and reading in school. She loves reading because of the novel studies she gets to do and her teachers. She loves math because it comes easily to her and the projects that she gets to work on. Ella wants to be a computer scientist when she grows up. She really enjoys when we do one hour of code at Sunrise, and that excites her to learn more about it when she grows up. Ella dances at Larry Servi School of Dance, where she takes ballet, tap, jazz, and hip hop. She is also involved in volleyball and plays the clarinet in band. Ella's parents stated that Gabriella is an intelligent kiddo who puts her heart into everything she does. She has a wide range of interests, and once she has decided to learn or do something, she does not give up until she has accomplished it. We also cherish Ella's sense of compassion and empathy toward those around her. She has a natural inclination to help people and does not hesitate to jump in to lend a hand. Here are some comments from some of her teachers. Mrs. Hawk states, who is here tonight, Ella always arises to a challenge in the math classroom where she uses higher-level thinking skills to solve any given problem. In addition, Ella is an avid reader, which contributes to her success as a writer, where she uses her vivid imagination and rich vocabulary to enhance each of her writing pieces. Mrs. Wise, who is also here tonight, states Ella isn't afraid to be herself and is a hard-working, caring, well-behaved student with great leadership qualities. Mr. Pompilio said Ella has an outstanding work ethic. She always puts forth all of her effort before turning in any assignment. Mrs. Chesky said Ella is always thoughtful and conscientious in her work. And the final quote is from Mr. Herbst, who is our gym teacher, quoting Chuck Knoll, "Your actions speak so loudly, I can't hear what you are saying." This best describes Ella's fantastic leadership skills. It is a joy to have Ella at Sunrise, and my absolute pleasure to recognize her as the Sunrise Elementary January Student of the Month.
Next, we have our middle school winner from Penn Middle, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Uh, before we do that, I'll just give you a brief update on Penn Middle School news. Uh, in December, we had our band concert, chorus concert, and our holiday senior citizen breakfast. Uh, pictures of those are all on our Twitter page and our website. Uh, coming up here in January, our clubs continue. We have our semester changeover, and now we've, uh, we've completed our mentoring pilot. We're ready to start moving into, uh, our one-to-one student mentoring with our SAP program. Uh, in professional development, uh, next Monday, the teachers will be meeting. One of the highlights of that day will be, uh, recognizing and working with students who have anxiety. Uh, in February, we have a parent coffee coming on devices and social media. A number of, it's about the time where a number of kids get devices in middle school for the holidays, and now parents need to know how to navigate Instagram, Snapchat, and whatever's coming down the road next. Uh, and then on the seventeenth, the eighth grade is having a career fair. So, uh, can I call Julia up? Julia Moorhead? Want to introduce Julia Moorhead. Uh, she's an eighth-grade student at Penn Middle School. She's the daughter of Anthony and Shannon Moorhead, and she has two brothers, Ryan and Jonathan. Her parents report that from childhood, she was very independent, getting herself up in the morning for school, doing everything, teeth, hair, clothes, and that started in kindergarten. Since a very young age, Julia has been involved in numerous activities, from brownies to dance to soccer, and right now, she's, uh, highlights with softball and basketball. If she felt it was right for her to stick to it, she did her very best and never, ever complained about a single practice. She's also been involved with Penn Middle Drama Club and now sings with the chorus. She's a member of our Spectrum program and enjoys the work she does with Mrs. Dats and the Life Skills Children. Julia enjoys school and what the academic and social aspects bring to her life. Julia is and always has been a social person with friends and family. She's inquisitive and enjoys learning. Even at her young age, she sets goals for herself and sees them through. I spoke to her little brother, Jonathan. He's a seventh grader. He says she can be nice at times. She always works hard, harder than me, and probably friendlier to other people than I am. We are pretty competitive, uh, whether it be games or hoops on the front, uh, driveway. Uh, her older brother, Ryan, who's a sophomore, a junior here at, uh, Penn Trafford High School, is proud of her. She's very athletic. She works very hard, uh, and she's a member of the Spectrum program. And they get along pretty well, for brother and sister, as they report there. Uh, speaking with Julia's teachers, she exemplifies what it means to be an outstanding young person. She is caring, studious, polite, artistic, and willing to go the extra mile for her fellow classmates. Her caring nature is such a wonderful quality that she will surely grow as she succeeds with future endeavors. During Julia's time at Penn Middle, not only she excelled in academics, she's proven over and over to be a wonderful young lady. She displays the utmost compassion and patience for kids with special needs. She continually includes life skill students in her daily routines by saying hello, giving a high five, or stopping to talk to them in the hall. In addition, she's wasted no time making sure they were included at the most recent school dance, dancing with them the whole night and their friends. Julia also chooses enrichment activity in the, uh, gifted program, the Spectrum program, that center around enhancing the learning of the life skill students. So yes, Julia isn't a very exceptional student, but her thoughtfulness and caring for others is what really makes her stand above her peers. So for all the teachers and I, we are very proud to have Julia Moorhead, the January Penn Middle School Student of the Month.
All right, and next, we're going to have our high school student of the month with Mr. Capiccioli.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. A little background of what's go, what's going on at the high school. Uh, Mr. Quilio, along with four of the teachers that are running the Q next year, that's the cross-curricular unified environment, we're taking a hundred and twenty students next year and working directly with the four teachers. He went down with the teachers and spoke with the students. Uh, I, I believe the students were a little overwhelmed. It's a new concept they'd never heard of, so it's going to take a little time for them to get used to that. We plan to rule this out to the parents as well, this, this Q program. On January 26th, it's already starting scheduling. That's for the eighth graders, so we're already looking next year for scheduling. That's on the 26th. It's in the cafeteria. All the teachers are set up around the cafeteria, and the students and the parents walk around and figure out what classes they are going to take for next year. As well as yet, eighth graders, the upperclassmen are starting to schedule this month as well. So we're already looking towards next year, and it's only January, so we need to start looking at our numbers. Also, uh, I've had a lot of positive feedback about the lunchroom. Thank you for agreeing to it. Uh, the lunch lines are getting longer every week. The students love the french fries. I don't know if it's fried food or something, but, uh, I don't know about our numbers, but I could tell you just by observing every day, our numbers are increasing with the students buying food. Um, the students keep on asking for ice cream. That's one thing that we still need to get there, but we're working on that. Uh, also, uh, driver's theory, I'm getting a lot of calls about that. That's starting up, and behind the wheel, it's important to a lot of these parents that the students do get these, uh, the basic, uh, basic help, because the parents are frustrated trying to teach their kids how to drive. So I do get a lot of calls about the driver's theory, and the theory is starting next month. Uh, that's all I have from the school. Uh, next, student of the month, Michael Bonacantro. Do you want to come up front here, please? Come on up. You know, when I called Michael down, a lot of times, the nature of my job, uh, a lot of students come into my office shaking, and they're always worried, because I usually don't give a lot of positive feedback or reinforcement when they come to my office, unfortunately. Uh, but when I told Michael and I congratulated him that he was student of the month, I could hear a sigh in the room. And when I called mom and congratulated her, and she first heard my voice, I introduced myself, and there was a sigh as well, and she was very proud to hear that her son was nominated as student of the month. So congratulations, Mom and Dad. Congratulations. As I stated, uh, accompanied with Michael today is his sister, Mom and Dad. He's currently in eleventh grade, and he is very successful academically and socially. Few things that his teacher, his teachers have stated. Uh, Mrs. Bucci, Michael is a pleasure to have in class. He is extremely a hard worker. He works at his own pace without becoming frustrated and overwhelming, and always gives his best effort. Mrs. Jones stated, Michael has overcome many challenges over the past few years while attending Penn Trafford High School. He has improved both academically and socially. Michael utilizes supports available to him at the high school to assist with his academic needs. Although Michael is quiet, he has learned to advocate for his needs and has developed an understanding for what he needs in order to become a successful adult. Michael continues to grow both socially and academically each year. Mr. Kozaklo said, Michael is polite, respectful, and hard-working student who applies himself on a daily basis in business and personal finance. He understands the importance of hard work and strives to do the best. Therefore, he continues to succeed academically and motivate others around him. I wish Michael the best, and I know he will always do well in the future. Mrs. Harris stated, Michael has been one of my students for the past two and a half years. Over this time period, I've seen him grow tremendously as a student. Michael is a hard-working, diligent man. He continually submits work that is deep and insightful. He often goes way beyond what is expected. Michael is also a very kind and caring person. His fellow classmates enjoy his company. He is very patient and willing to learn. He makes everyone around him feel important. Michael is also deserving of the student of the month. He exemplifies what hardworking is and what diligent, what a diligent should, student should look like. Michael never gives up, and because of this, his work, he has become stronger and stronger as an individual. I am so thankful that I have been given the privilege to teach him. Mrs. Campbell has stated, Michael is a quiet, hard-working student that wants to do well in school. He is polite and always willing to help other students if they are struggling with any skills. Mike's work ethic and commitment to his studies helped him set the tone for the room. He is a great role model to other students consistently giving one hundred percent. Mr. Grovek has stated, Mike is an excellent student that possesses an excellent work ethic. He uses every minute of class to further his academics. He's friendly, kind, and always says hello in the hall. Mike is very, Mike is very well-read on the topics of history. What I like most about Mike is that he is low-maintenance student. He's able to do his work independently and excels at doing independent and quality work. It is refreshing pleasure to have Mike in class. To date, Michael is still undecided with his path after high school. It is with great pleasure to congratulate Michael Bonacantro as Penn Trafford High School Student of the Month.
I think it's going to take a few minutes to take pictures for the, um, press with the three winners. If you can please come over here.
Congratulations.
All right, actually, that's all I have for information. Um, of course, Mike.
Okay, we, we don't have any, uh, visitors signed up to speak tonight, so, uh, I'll move right into the meeting. All right, we have a motion that the treasurer's report for December 2016 and the high school extracurricular fund report for November 2016 be approved and made part of the official minutes. Motion. Section by Mr. Nemec, second by Mr. Petrucci.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the payment of bills for the month of January 2017?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Nemec, second by Mr. Petrucci.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Uh, there's no old business, uh, this evening, and prior to the meeting, we had an executive session, and we discussed, uh, we met to discuss real estate, student issues, contracts, and received information for feasibility studies. Uh, right into new business and, uh, athletics and extracurricular. Dr. Koschko.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a few items, uh, for tonight's meeting. Move to employ the following personnel effective immediately. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Gary Backo, junior high head softball coach, at a salary of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Stephanie Bondra, newspaper sponsor at Penn Middle, the salary of four hundred and sixty-six dollars per rated. Mike Cleland, JV assistant softball coach, at a salary of three thousand five hundred and nine dollars. Janet Johnson, musical props co-coordinator, salary of a hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents. Kendall Morasty, JV head softball coach, at a salary of three thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Ron Paredes, junior high assistant softball coach, at a salary of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Barbara, Matt, help me with that.
Show J.
Show J, musical props co-coordinator, at a salary of a hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents. And Laurie Sarmack, computer tech assistant at McKenna, at a salary of one thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars.
Second.
Question.
A second by Mr. Petrucci. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches effective immediately. Extracurricular volunteers must have their Act 34-151 waivers on file at the administration building. All coaching volunteers, that's a repeat, isn't it? Coaching volunteers must have Act 31-4-151 and 114 waivers on file with the F.
Ones for extracurricular ones with, yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you, Bruce Knoll. Devon Austin, volunteer wrestling coach. Rich LeVere, volunteer softball coach. Rebecca Parsons, volunteer softball coach. Justin Smith, volunteer wrestling coach. Brad Yammerich, volunteer softball coach.
Second. Second by Mr. Nemec.
Question being called.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That'll be all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. or Dr. Koschow. Uh, budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the following expenditures for the high school renovation project according to schedule as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knoll.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the addendum to the student assistance program agreement for the 2017-18 school year. Second.
Second by Mr. Knoll. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the school-based access program settlement agreement for the 2012-13 school year in the amount of $23,534.38.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemec.
Question.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That is all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik.
You're welcome, sir.
Buildings and grounds, building grounds and safety, I believe. Mr. Leonard is out, so Mr. Matarazzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to employ the following personnel. New employment contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Acts 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Dominic Disso, custodian at Penn Trafford High School at an hourly rate of $15.20, effective December 11th, 2016. Brian McDonough, custodian at Penn Trafford High School at an hourly rate of $15.20, also effective December 19th of 2016.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koschow. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to also ask, Dr. Harris, could you possibly reaffirm the comments about Apex in a public meeting?
Yeah, we're actually working with them to improve bus transportation around... Well, they're actually working around our bus transportation schedule with their trucks because they don't want to have the trucks out at the same time we have our buses out. I appreciated the working with them to do that.
Thank you very much.
I have a question too, Billy. Mr. Ingles, I saw renovation. Are we close to completing our punch-out list for the...
Yeah, the punch list is getting close to being done. We still have, actually this weekend, we still have to punch the basement because that was just turned over to us about two months ago. So we still have a little bit of work there. But I would anticipate the bills being paid within the next couple of months. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Are you prepared?
Yeah.
Onto employee relations, negotiations, and transportation. Mrs. Issing.
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Issing. Food service, Mr. Nemec.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of January 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matarazzo. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave request by Mr. Gary Bracco, Mr. John Devorick, Lynn Eckberg, and Patricia Mintz, as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to give, file and approve a Penn Trafford High School program of studies for 2017-18 school year as submitted to the board.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Issing.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to issue a professional contract to the following teacher in accordance with Section 1108, Pennsylvania. The teacher has satisfactorily completed three years of teaching in the Penn Shire School District, Sarah Oliver.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Issing.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
It's hard to interrupt, but it's hard to believe that she's been here three years already. Time flies.
Where is she?
She's at Level Green. She serves as a reading specialist and science teacher. She works down with Mr. Renier.
Move to make the following change, 2017-18 school calendar. It'd be from Tuesday, November 14th to Tuesday, November 7th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Thank you. That change goes with the election day. It's actually the 7th versus 14th.
Redo it? Redo it?
Yeah, you're right. We're good. I was just saying why we did that.
Move to accept the following retirement resignation. David Martin, guidance counselor at Penn Shire High School, effective August 9th, 2017.
Second, begrudgingly.
Can we say no?
We should not accept that one.
Yeah, can we say no?
Second by Mr. Knoll.
Question.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Mr. Martin will be greatly missed at the high school for all that he does and all the kids he serves.
How many years is he here?
I think he arrived around the year 2000. So he's probably been here 16 years, 17 years.
He came from Woodland Hills. And we came, we paid him top of the salary at that time. And everybody says, you know, you're sure you're guidance counselor, guidance counselor, but the man has performed his reputation at Woodland Hills. Your neighbor, Jack Podasky, highly recommended him, and he was absolutely right.
He's worth every dime. Absolutely.
Absolutely right. Okay, move to deploy the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34-151, 114 waivers, according to Pennsylvania, within 30 days. David Bramson, Roberta Falk-Johnson, the math tutors, and Kristy Killian, as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the following resignation. Judy Pipis, Penn Shire High School, Building 8, effective December 20th, 2016, will remain on the sub-list.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemec. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And I'm glad Judy's remaining on the sub-list. She's a good worker.
I have two additional things here, Mr. President. Move to approve the provision of transportation and payment of $5,000 attorney fees stipulated in the settlement agreement presented to the board.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knoll.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And the last line, Mr. President. Move to approve the expulsion agreement with the student number 2017-002 as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemec.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
So I am, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy, public relations, legislative title to, Mr. Matarazzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. Taxes, insurance, and census, Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a couple of items this evening. Move to appoint the following to the Westmoreland County Tax Collection Committee, where Lego is the voting delegate and Dallas Leonard is the alternate delegate.
Second.
Question.
Second by Dr. Koschow. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the request that Mr. John Comer be exempt from payment of all real estate taxes for 127 Mount Pleasant Boulevard in Irwin, PA, as recorded in the Office of the Recorder of Deeds in and for Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania. The Pennsylvania State Veterans Commission for Real Estate Tax Exemption has verified that Mr. Comer is permanently disabled due to his military service and therefore exempt of all real estate taxes on the above-mentioned property. This exemption case will be reviewed every five years for determination of continued financial need.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Issing.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.